Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 2nd, 2021 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and the health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirement, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable, Spectrum, and Charter Channel, Cable Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandaleca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. I would lead the flagship. Please join me in the flagship. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, one God, and the liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Agajanian.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, it is our prayer that we may be worthy of the blessings provided to us. We ask for prosperity and peace in our community as well as our nation. Guide our council as they consider matters before them and guide them in their decisions for the good of Glendale. Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the February 2nd, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, January 26, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be three presentations and appointments, three eight-agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, February 9, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. John Taktilian.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of the City Council. Next week should be a fairly short meeting. We don't have any meetings in the afternoon, and the Evening Council Meeting that starts at 6 has one item under consent. It's a report from Community Services and Parks regarding emergency pet food grant for Meals on Wheels program. And one action item under 8A would be a report from the City Attorney regarding the findings of denial for the Design Review Board case located at 1248 Corona Drive. That concludes next week's.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next would be Mayor's Commendation, Karate Master Shant Bhajanian.
City of Glendale, Mayor's Commendation. Presented to Shant Bhajanian. Shant Bhajanian Karate Academy. In recognition of your passion and dedication as a world-renowned karate master, I commend your hard work and dedication in helping our youth learn the fundamentals of karate and self-defense. Your work as a filmmaker and an author has also been inspirational to our community. Thank you for serving as a shining example to all, and on behalf of the City of Glendale, I wish you continued success. Mayor Janujanian, Mayor, January 18, 2021. So today, I mean, this is, we are holding for a while?
Should have been the 2nd February, but we'll change the date, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Is there, you want to say something, Shant?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to extend my gratitude for this amazing commendation. I'm really honored and humbled. You know, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also all the council members, City Council, Andy, and everybody who was involved in making this decision. I'm really grateful on behalf of myself, my students, and all the parents. And I'll definitely hang this up on the wall, and everybody would be proud of it, I'm sure. And I'm just, I'm so grateful. I love Glendale. I've been living here for over 30 years now, and I've been teaching martial arts for 40, some of it in Boston and most of it here. And I will continue to do so until I plan on living in this city for the rest of my life. So I really, I love this city. It's a great city. It's safe. It's wonderful. And people, I love the people of Glendale. I just enjoy this city, and I want to serve all the children until, until I'm out of this world. You know what I mean? I'm very grateful for this commendation. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and all the council members.
Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. And before you say that, you made the right decision to stay in Glendale for a long time.
Yes, sir.
I just want to congratulate Shant Bhajanian. He is a great part of this community. His dojo has trained a number of, you know, young Glendaleans and folks from all over Los Angeles. It's an institution, and, you know, it's a great way. Hopefully, you know, more and more people find out about this, and once COVID is over, they can enroll and exercise and be physical again. I know I have a young one that I look forward to possibly enrolling to get some of that energy, that pent-up six-year-old energy out. But I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the days. You were, I think you were in After Freedom, right? You were one of the stars of the movie After Freedom by Vaheva Bayan.
Yeah, that was a while ago. It was a great movie. I think Bayan did a great job.
Based in Glendale, was set in Glendale about that experience. I want to thank you for everything that you've done and congratulations. Thank you, Mayor, for honoring him.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege, and like I said, I'm really humbled by this amazing award. Thank you so much, everybody, and all the council members. Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Appointment of Boards and Commission Members by Devine Agajanian on January 26, 2021. Robert Agajanian, Housing Authority.
Ms. Devine, you want to start, or you want me to say? Okay, I leave it to you.
Well, Mayor, I know that I can tell everyone that you and I interviewed many candidates for this position. It's been open for over two years, so we're, you and I are happy that we have a candidate and a gentleman who is willing to volunteer his services for our community. Robert is a five-year, has been a five-year resident in Glendale. He is a vet. He lives at our Veterans Village and chairs the Veterans Council at the village. He has an AE degree in social behavior from LA City College. He's studying for a career as a paralegal. As I said, he's anxious to become involved in serving the community, and I think with his experience in the affordable housing venues, he's ready for this position. And I think he's right here with us. So, Robert, we should have a vote first? Do the vote first?
Maybe I add something, then we can go to...
Go ahead, of course.
I'm sorry. Sorry for that. I have to, I have to say, this is the third year that I have been involved with picking up one person to join us on Housing Board. And we had problems. I tried this with Zareh. I tried this with former Mayor Najarian, and now this was the third try. There is a saying for the third time anyway. Third time trying. And so I were, what I'm trying to say, this is, I guess, the first time we are picking up a person who's a veteran, which is new to our system. We never had a veteran to serve on Housing Board. So with that, Robert, if you want to add something, please do it at this time.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much, first of all. Thank you, and thank you, everybody. And this is a humbling experience for me. It's an honor to be, to serve Glendale City Housing Authority as a community commissioner. And I want to add something that I am an Armenian-American veteran. Just to spice it up a little bit. And just like already mentioned, Glendanian, or Glendanian, I love that. I've never used that term, but I'm happy to be Glendanian. And I love residing. I love the city here. I'd like to leave service to the city.
Thank you, Robert. I have to add, actually, that Robert's nephew used to be City Council Member in City of Montebello for a few terms. I can't remember how many terms. He served as City Council Member in Montebello. Is there any other comment? Or otherwise, we go to vote?
Can I ask Robert a question?
Yes, please.
Oh, Robert, well, nice to meet you over WebEx.
Okay.
And I look forward to what you're going to bring to the commission and, oh, the authority, not the commission, I'm sorry. I used the wrong term, the Housing Authority. What branch of the military did you serve in?
US Army, sir. In 1975, I went to basic training when Vietnam War was still on. By the time I got through the training, the Vietnam War ended. I got lucky, and I didn't get shipped out. So I served in the state that I live in. So I'm a Cal vet. I served at Fort Ord.
Okay, good. Good timing. Good timing.
Got lucky.
All right.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Ms. Devine. Okay. Roll call, please, I guess, for...
I need a motion, Mayor.
Yeah.
Just needs, it just needs to be moved.
Okay.
But that, it doesn't need a second, but just to move.
All right. So we go to the next item?
We get someone to move the nomination?
Yeah.
I'll move the nomination.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead, Aron.
And...
Unless it doesn't require, does this require a second or just...
It doesn't.
Roll call. I think we don't need it because both of us apparently be seconded, right?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Welcome, Robert, yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Congratulations, Robert. Now you are a commissioner or a Housing Authority member. Okay.
Sorry.
All right. I guess Mr. Garcia was doing right. Already I had me, and so that's why I said, let's go to...
I just, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I just didn't hear the words "it's moved", that's all.
Yeah. Okay. That's all right. Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
May I have a motion? May I have a motion for design?
I'll move the consent challenge.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have that echoed. Mr. Mayor, we have the echo again?
Oh. Our expert, what we do. I can't hear, he has mask, and I can't hear what he's saying.
Councilmember Devine, they are looking into it right now.
Oh. That's a good answer, by the way. All the time, we are looking into it, but we'll see what will happen. What's next, please?
Next would be City Council and Staff Comments.
Is there any comments from my colleagues? If we don't have, we go to the next slide? Do we have any comments? Okay. Next. I would like to invite...
I have, I have some comments.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah. Just, I just have one thing. I got an email from a resident, which got me thinking about something that's been on my mind for a while. What he wrote was that somebody bought the neighboring property and cut down... I'm hearing this echo, so it's a little hard to talk. Anyway, somebody bought a neighboring property and cut down a number of large, mature shade trees. You can see on Google Maps, there, at least one of them was very large, and he estimated it's about 30 years old. I know we have indigenous tree ordinance, but otherwise, I don't think we have any rules about cutting down mature shade trees on private property. And I would like to ask staff to look at this and bring back a report to discuss a possible ordinance requiring a replacement mechanism. So if you cut down a tree, depending on the size and all that, you need to replace it. Perhaps there's a formula for how many saplings equal one mature tree. Perhaps there's some kind of an in-loop fee process for a property owner that doesn't have the space or just doesn't want a tree on their property. And, you know, I understand we're talking about private property, so I'm not at all suggesting that people can't remove trees. But trees, we all know, provide a shared ecosystem service to the community, cooling the, you know, cooling the environment, air quality, noise reduction, habitat, lots of things, right? We should be expanding our urban forest as much as possible. So I'm hoping that we can come up with something that balances, you know, individual property rights against quality of life for the community at large. And I believe that several other cities probably nearby us do have mechanisms like this. So if one of my colleagues is interested in supporting this, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, last week, when I brought up the Urban Forest Report request, and I believe it was seconded, is it possible to, would Councilmember Brotman be open to rolling his suggestions into that one report?
Yes, I would be, and I meant to actually ask you about that, and I apologize, because they are somewhat related. So that's a good idea.
Okay. Do we have any second, Mr. Garcia, or it's already considered?
Well, I was taking, Mr. Councilmember Kasakian's comment is a second as long as it's rolled into the prior report.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything now?
Are we suggesting that the tree, that saplings be placed on the same property or somewhere else within the city?
What I've read is, you know, most of these rules don't require that. So I don't know what the mechanism is. We should look into that. I mean, I think in some properties, it just doesn't work or the property owner doesn't want it, so we can't force somebody to put a tree on their property. But maybe we have some alternative mechanism.
Okay. Mr. Garcia, I want to, maybe since this came up, so what a rule or regulation says about regular trees in a private property? What's the rule? So I can cut all of them, or what's the rule?
You know, frankly, Count, Mr. Mayor, I'm not the expert, but my understanding of the rule is correct, as stated by Mr. Brotman. We have the indigenous tree ordinance, which requires certain mitigation for certain types of trees.
Right.
But other than that, there's no, there's no, there's no rule.
Okay. And I just wanted to be clear for the public that what we are talking about, I know indigenous trees, you, they have license, or they, you should not touch it. You have to trim it, because I have it, so I know the rule and regulation about it. Okay. Now, if there is no other comment...
I think Councilman Najarian has a comment.
Mr. Najarian? Yes, Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to report on some action from the Metro Board this past Thursday, which is good news for the City of Glendale. It's good news if you like infrastructure improvements. The Metro Board voted to increase funding up to $8.4 million for the final engineering and design work for the Duran Street Crossing. The Duran Street Crossing, as you know, is one of the most dangerous crossings in all of LA County. It's used by the Freight Railroad's Amtrak as well as MetroLink. Next to it is a propane, I can't make this up, there's a propane storage facility. You can see the huge tower, and it's just adjacent to the 134 freeway. It's around the blind curve that passes under the freeway, and the engineer is in darkness until he reaches the crossing. So the possibility for disaster is definitely there. Metro is designing a great separation so cars won't be crossing from San Fernando Road over the tracks at track level to the other side in Atwater. There is a fancy flyover design that's made, which also includes active transportation bridges, so bicyclists and pedestrians can, can come over. The good news is that when this is completed, it will be a quiet zone. It's fully supported by the Palancony Homeowners Association, the City of LA, and the City of Glendale, obviously, and we will have, once completed, the longest quiet zone stretch in all of LA County. So we won't hear those trains honking. We already have four quiet zones north of that, but that one intersection requires the trains, both freight and passenger, to sound their horns. And hopefully, in the future, as the funding for construction comes in, we will have a safe crossing, and it'll be quiet for the entire neighborhoods, both in LA and in Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you. I now, I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to community event announcement. We will be taking no more than five callers. Each speaker will be given three minutes to share their comments. Do we have any callers, Mr. Agajanian?
Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Okay. That's not bad.
Very good.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is item number seven, Adoption of Ordinance to 7A Police Department Regarding an Ordinance of the City of Glendale, California, Amending Chapter 9, Public Peace and Welfare of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 by adding Chapter 9.19 to impose certain time, place, and manner regulations as to public demonstration and protest.
Mr. Rubik Golanyan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This item was introduced previously, I believe, last week by Councilmember Brotman, and it's presented to council tonight for adoption.
Okay. Is there any other explanation, Mr. Garcia?
Nothing that's needed unless council has any questions.
Okay. Is there any question? Do we have any callers then, on this item?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Roll call, please.
We need a motion, a second, Mr. Mayor.
I guess I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be 7B, Public Works Regarding an Ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Amending Chapter 8.44 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, Updating Standards for Recycling Collection.
Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council. This item was introduced by Councilmember Devine last week, and again, it's presented tonight for adoption. If we can have a council member move and move it, and then be seconded.
Is there, do we have any callers first?
I'm sorry, unless there are...
I'm sorry, unless there are any questions from council.
But let's see, if there is callers?
Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Okay, all right, my council, yes, Councilmember Brotman?
I have two, well, question and a, and a comment. So when we discussed this last week, I asked a number of questions, and I want to thank the Public Works Department, Yazin Imrani and Dan Hargrove, for getting back with a, with a very comprehensive memo that went through each of these questions, and I'm satisfied with what they wrote. One of the things that I brought up was this question of making sure that in future, new projects are built so that they have the adequate space for three bin system and potentially multiple chutes, so that there's not an argument made that, well, we can't do the separation because we don't have the space. So my question is, where would that, I mean, I know this wouldn't be in this kind of an ordinance. So is that a design guideline? Where would we go? And how would we go about approaching that issue?
Who's next? Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman. We could look at that and figure out what the best approach, whether that's in a development standard or a development review standard that would be imposed through traditional conditions of approval, although sometimes the projects might not go through a process, so it might be better to codify it. But I will, our office will work, I guess, with Public Works and CDD to look at the best way to implement that for future projects. If that's, if that's the council. I think the best approach would be for us to look at what would be the best way to do that, and then report back to the council, and then council can provide its direction.
And if I could make a suggestion, I know we're going to be seeing a new set of ordinances for SB 1383, the organics recycling. So I think it's fine to wait for that, because I don't know what those requirements are going to look like exactly, and those could influence what we, what we want to do. So we can maybe dovetail it with the consideration of SB 1383 changes.
We'll take that into account.
Okay, and just the only other thing I wanted to say is, when we do see the new ordinance, or the, or the changes to our code for SB 1383, I would just ask, could we be given a little bit more time so that if there are any points that any of us have that need to be incorporated into the ordinance, if we give any direction for changes, that we're not in a situation where we're going to delay something that's critical? So if we could get just enough time to maybe, you know, possibly do one or two iterations, if necessary?
Yes, we can accommodate that, Councilmember Brotman.
Okay, and on that, I'll move the item unless, well, Councilmember Devine might want to move it. She introduced it.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, next item, please, thank you.
Next item is eight, eight action items, 8A Community Development, regarding requests for letting opposing, opposing the proposed Griffith Park tram, one motion authorizing the city manager to prepare and send a letter in opposition to the Griffith Park tram.
Okay, Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council. This item is presented to you in response to a request by Councilmember Devine. And I'm going to turn it over to Eric Kraus, our Deputy Director of Community Development, for a brief presentation. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Let me try, let me get the PowerPoint up real quick, and then we'll start getting going on this. Oh, there we go. Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Staff is here tonight for council's direction on the city's position on the tramway that is currently proposed for Griffith Park. The tramway was included in what is now known as the Dixon Report, that was prepared by the City of Los Angeles to explore possible solutions to parking and traffic issues that mainly associated with visitors to the Hollywood sign. The Dixon Report was organized in around seven goals, meant to improve the mobility and access and safety inner around Griffith Park. The seven goals were to enhance pedestrian safety, improve traffic flow and reduce congestion, improve access to Griffith Park and trailheads, improve emergency vehicle access, increase parking efficiency and compliance rates, expand transit opportunities, and actively manage and provide optimized visitor opportunities. As a feasibility study, excuse me, the Dixon Report, the City of Los Angeles prepared a feasibility study for one of 29 of the possible solutions that were analyzed in the Dixon Report. And this was actually the most complex one that was included in there, which was the aerial tramway. So they prepared the feasibility study, which included five technical reports, including biological findings, the topographic cross-sections, traffic numbers, rider numbers, and viewing station, which would be located approximately 400 feet from the Hollywood sign. There are four routes identified in the feasibility study. There's, they're included in this slide here. Route one would originate from Travel Town. This particular route is most likely the one that could have acts, or, excuse me, impacts, or potentially issues around, centered around the Rancho area, which is a horse property that's utilized by both City of Glendale and Burbank. So the Rancho area could see potential impacts, and that would be the main point of where direct impacts could occur for the City of Glendale. Because the location for that is in Travel Town Station for Route one, which is near the, what is, excuse me, now I'm forgetting the name of the horse track. But there's a horse facility there, there's a trail that goes over the LA River from the Rancho area into Griffith Park, that's both utilized by residents of Glendale and Burbank. And there's potential for the Travel Town Station to impact those equestrian facilities. But the other two routes, Routes one and two, located near the Zoo Park, Route four, which be located on the south side of the park near Warner Brothers. There have been letters of opposition sent out by various organizations, and also the City of Burbank, that include the Friends of Griffith Park, the Sierra Club, the Los Angeles Audubon Society, and, as mentioned, the City of Burbank. And Senator Portina's office also sent a letter, which requested additional information, and cited some areas of concern similar to those that were included in the letters of opposition. Concerns and potential impacts that are cited in the opposition letters include route originating from Travel Town that may result in the loss of the Martinez Arena. That's the name of the arena I forgot to tell you guys about. That was potential for eliminating important equestrian facilities. So if that route in the Travel Town, they may have to either make modifications to the Martinez Arena and/or, you know, trail access to Griffith Park. Some of the other concerns were it would degrade a unique habitat that's currently required and utilized by birds that persist in Griffith Park. This is a comment from the Audubon Society, and in their letter, they state that there's approximately 300 species of birds that utilize Griffith Park currently. There's potential for a result in loss of permanent open space, habitat, and wildlife. Long-term closures of hiking trails in areas within the park will be disruptive to those who use the park on a daily basis. The aerial tramway cutting through the middle of the park with the viewing platform on, near Mount Lee and the Hollywood sign would permanently scar this unique urban wilderness. And then the opposition believes that it would conflict with the vision plan and cultural, and historic cultural monument designation of Griffith Park. Since there is no environmental review such as an ER, have been prepared to date, the objections and potential impacts in the opposition letters that have been identified are without the benefit of environmental review. Some of these impacts and opinions do not need formal review to know that may exist. However, the severity of those impacts and possible mitigation measures to mitigate those impacts has not yet been identified. The City of LA is in the next stage of the aerial tramway would be to take that to their city council and vote on what they want to proceed and move forward with their. Count, in conclusion, should the council direct the interim city manager to draft a letter to oppose their Griffith Park aerial tramway? Staff is seeking direction on which issues council would like us to see in that letter. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Is there any question from Mr. Kraus or staff?
Mayor, I do have three callers on the line.
Okay, let's go to the callers first, yes.
Gary Hans, you're live. Gary? Gary, can you hear me?
Yeah, Jerry?
Jerry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, hi, I'm Jerry Hans. I'm president of Friends of Griffith Park. I'm also a property owner in Glendale and operated a business in Glendale for 18 years. Thank you very much for considering the impacts of the Griffith Park aerial tram. First, I noticed the Dixon Report is part of the agenda package, and I'd recommend that you really take the Dixon Strategy work with a grain of salt. The Dixon Group is a parking consultant based in San Diego. They were hired to conduct the meetings with the residents in the impacted areas where visitors go to the Hollywood sign. And they were in discussions in those meetings regarding how to mitigate those impacts, but the aerial tram was never part of those discussions. There was great enthusiasm for some of the other ideas in the Dixon Strategy Report, such as electric shuttles, better connectivity to public transportation. But the report itself, it was basically included behind closed doors, I think, to create a false sense that the aerial tram was related or could solve some of the access and traffic congestion problems. It actually will do little to solve any of the problems, even at those affected residential areas. And that is the reason why all of those homeowners associations have all jumped on and sent opposition letters to the aerial tram. Mainly, Friends of Griffith Park is strongly opposed to all of the aerial tram alignments, because each would be tremendously destructive to habitat and wildlife in the park. The park is the largest expanse of contiguous habitat area in the eastern Santa Monica Mountains. Its high-quality, diverse habitat does not deserve to be fragmented and degraded by this huge project. The project would increase net traffic, and especially increase it on the Glendale side of the park for options one, two, and three. There are no good connections to green public transportation for any of the proposed alignments, and a huge increase in greenhouse gas emissions is guaranteed. So we hope that you will join us and at least 30 other nonprofits, neighborhood councils, advisory boards, HOAs, legislators, and city governments in opposing the aerial tram, all of the options. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hans. Next caller, please.
David Eisenberg, you're live, David?
Good evening, Councilmember, Mayor Agajanian and councilmembers. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm a Glendale resident, and I'm also the chair of the Verdugo Hills Group of the Sierra Club, which our area is mostly Glendale and Burbank. I'm also calling as a representative of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. I'm on their steering committee. And we are opposed to this tram in Griffith Park. And I'd like to talk from the point of view of a Glendale resident. This is something, this is a solution to a tourist issue. It's not, it doesn't, you know, it purports to talk about, you know, we're going to ease flow through the park. But, you know, I've seen these trams in other locations, and people who live in Los Angeles, most people are not going to pay the money that it would cost to ride this tram to the park. Well, they might take a shuttle. And where are people going to go when they come to park through that? I'm sure you've seen the, the events that happened at Griffith Park when they do that Christmas light show, and the traffic backs up down the freeways. So, you know, freeway traffic is at a standstill. You've seen the, you know, it's gridlock in the park. This is what's going to happen, you know, you're going to, you're a tourist. There's no connections to anything. It's not like you take a tram or something there. You have to drive there and park. And that, that will be a huge impact with traffic coming through our community. Even, you know, even those of us that are just in commuting and not stopping at Griffith Park, or don't live in the Rancho, we're going to be, you know, it's already a heavily impacted intersection. We also are very concerned about the, the wildlife and the plant life that's on the, in Griffith Park. You can imagine what's going to be happening. Either they're going to have to cut roads in there, or there'll be the huge construction helicopters covering over, pretty much, won't be hearing it in Glendale while they're doing their construction for those tram routes, if they're doing helicopters. You know what it's like when a helicopter flies over for a police helicopter, and how loud that is, and construction helicopters are louder. So all those impacts, we, and we, of course, support everything that the people in Friends of Griffith Park. We want to thank Councilmember Devine for bringing this issue to the council, and we urge you to vote to send this letter and join Burbank in opposing this tram. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberg. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, I do have one more caller.
Let's hear them.
Carol Brusha?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Carol, go ahead.
Well, what has been said by Jerry Hans and Mr. Eisenberg, I will not repeat, because you've heard, I have the same feelings. A letter from the council can help save Griffith Park from destruction. And one thing that has not been brought out is Griffith Park has brush fires that erupt within the park every few years. And due to the park's rugged terrain, this could become a catastrophe in rescue operations. There are many negative impacts that a tram would cause in the park, and you've already heard them, so I need not repeat them. But I do think you need to look at some activities like brush fires. And I noticed in the presentation, the letters that had been sent on the PowerPoint, actually, there were many more letters sent. And the Center for Biological Diversity has sent a very, very informative letter about stating the reasons why there should not be a tram in the park. And by the way, I am a resident of Glendale. I have lived here since 1985, and I am also on the board of Friends of Griffith Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. Okay, is there any other call?
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Is there any comment? My concern is that this report, there is no EIR report, and they're waiting until more detailed information is available, including SEQA review. So I have no objection to object, actually. But is it too early we are jumping on this matter? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr., okay.
That's fine.
Mr. Golanyan, go ahead. That's fine. That's all I wanted to say. I'm just worried that we are getting involved in this matter too. It's too early to get involved, it appears. I mean, that's all.
Yeah, Mayor Agajanian, just wanted to check with Mr. Kraus to make sure that he covered all of his. he covered all of his, uh, PowerPoint slides.
Oh.
Before we, uh, go over to council.
Yes, we did. Thank you, uh, Mr. Kulanyan.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I do believe there's somebody else.
Okay, let's listen to the person.
On the line, uh, they are going to transfer it right now.
Is the caller on the line?
Yes. Joanne Hedge, you're live, Joanne?
Yes.
Go ahead, you're live.
Yeah. Thank you. This, this is Joanne Hedge. I represent the Glendale Rancho Neighborhood Association. We were founded in 1999, and we have already, uh, sent written material to you opposing this and joining the Burbank State Council for its same reasons, to oppose it. Um, other people have brought up the issues of habitat wreckage, the long-term impact of even just the construction, uh, the rumination really of the longtime-used Martinez Arena by riders, and the fact that it is, I don't think, many of us don't believe this project even reflects the original mandates, uh, given by an admission statement by the Griffith family as to the usages of the park. It's mechanical, it's enormous, it's for profit, it's to satisfy Olympic tourism, but after that, we're stuck with it. And we just feel that the impacts on Glendale and on Burbank, uh, equestrian areas, much less just recreational and other uses, uh, is egregious. And we are vehemently opposed to it and are really joined by many of the folks who signed the Save the Rancho campaign in 2018 that had to do with Silver Spur Stables. And that was 4,000 people in an online petition alone. So there are thousands of people who do not want this project. So thank you for listening, and we hope that you'll, uh, write a letter that supports the reasons to deny it.
Thank you, Mr. Hedge. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, there are no.
Is there any other call?
There are no more callers.
Thank you. Okay. Or is there any comment, Ms. Devine? Uh, you are mute, Diamond. Okay.
I keep forgetting to do that. Um, you know, uh, I brought this forward because I was, uh, because of the request from the Friends of the Griffith Park, um, board. But, you know, I think we all have to remember that the Rancho is a very unique and valuable, important part of our community. And, uh, if, for no other reason, this would really impact the Rancho if they pick one of the, um, uh, choices that are provided in this report. Uh, there is a general and widespread, um, opposition, uh, to this, uh, project in the equestrian and the residential, uh, portions of the Rancho population. Um, just to give you, and I don't want to regurgitate all of these, uh, these reasons, but I think what we have to remember is the impacts on the trails, uh, you know, recreational and enjoyable, the preservation of the wildlife habitat. And the, the thing is, and I ask the same question, uh, Mayor, are we too early for this? But the fact of the matter is, no matter what they do, we know how we can be impacted and how the Rancho can be impacted by this if they decide to go through with it. And, uh, I think we can do that even without an environmental, uh, review. Uh, the, um, the environmental damage such as the operational noise, the air views, you know, looking up from the park or the neighborhoods and seeing trams, uh, going by. And that loss of Martinez Arena across the Horse Bridge from Glendale, that could sever our access to, um, the park. Um, and, and what purpose does this serve except to be a touristy, um, project, um, that's going to blight, you know, the touristy blight, uh, where natural open space is so desperately needed? I think if we put our voices, our letter of opposition in now, that if, if they decide to go through with this project, they will at least have heard from Glendale, from our Rancho, from the Friends of Griffith Park, a- and many others, um, that, you know, we're not interested in having this over our city, and our residents don't want it, and neither do our equestrians that live in that area. And so that's why I brought this forward, because I thought there were so many good reasons, uh, to be opposed to this project at this point. Not only environmentally, but, um, historically, uh, the, um, the damage that it could do, the wa- the wildlife, the habitat, et cetera. So I, um, I am hoping that, uh, with this discussion, uh, my colleagues will, uh, come to, uh, agree with me that, you know, it is time to send this letter of opposition and, and to represent our Rancho neighbors, our, our community, uh, because they are, they are the ones that will really be impacted by this project if it goes forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other comment by my colleague? Mr. Councilmember Bratton?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to repeat what Councilmember Devine said. I think she covered, uh, most of it, all of it, probably. I, I'm, I'm really perplexed that this is even being seriously considered, and I'm, I'm wondering who wants it? Um, but I think we know enough. I mean, for me, they're just, uh, I mean, the fact that anybody using this has to drive and park, that there's no connection to public transit, I can't believe that anyone would be considering a project at, at this, at this time, um, that is totally car-dependent. And, and then all the other things we heard about, the habitat destruction and, and the, and the views. And so I'm, uh, you know, I, I think we know enough that we don't need to wait for an environmental review, so I'm on board.
Is there any other comment? Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
So, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of bad things about this project, and, uh, Mr. Eisenberg put it best. He says, "You can only imagine what those, uh, structures are going to look like and imagine how those structures are going to be put in place." Well, I have no idea how they're going to be put in place. I have no idea what they're going to look like. I, I do, I do support process on these things, and I think our objections would be much more valid, I think, and, uh, credible if we point to specifics that are raised in an EIR where it says, "There's going to be this much vibration, this much visual impact, this much historical impact, this much habitat impact." Right now, we're saying we just, you know, we don't like it. I think, I think this idea was picked up by Senator Portentino, who, I don't think he's a fan of this project, but his, his letter certainly indicates that there are some concerns that, that need to be raised. I have those concerns too, but I think we're, we're not, uh, you know, I think, I think our opposition could be criticized by proponents. I don't know who the proponents are, but could be criticized that, "Look at these, these, uh, NIMBYs, they didn't even wait for the EIR, and they're against this project." I think we should wait for the EIR and then have a, a thoughtful, deliberate, uh, opposition to each and every type of impact that there is going to be. And there are a few that we raised, but I'm not sure those are the impacts that the EIR is going to raise, and there may be even more impacts that the EIR is going to raise. Keep in mind that this is not a decision that Glendale City Council makes. This is the big, uh, you know, s- 600-pound gorilla next door, the city of Los Angeles. I just think we should take more of an approach of Senator Portentino, uh, express some, some, uh, you know, negative thoughts about it at this point, but hold short of a opposition letter to the project. I don't even know what that project is. I've seen the routes, I don't know how big they are, how, how much noise they make, I don't know if there's a plan to bring, uh, transit to, let's say, the LA Zoo or the Autry Museum parking lot. Uh, I just don't know enough about it to come out and sign a letter that says, "I'm against this project," although there's certainly some issues raised, I mean, without a doubt. Uh, there are issues raised, but I think those issues need to be formalized, and they need to be, uh, addressed in the appropriate forum than just firing off a letter saying, "We don't like your tram project." So, that's, I mean, I'm not rooting for this project, don't get me wrong, but I think, I think our opposition, if that's where we're going to end up, is much better, um, enunciated and put forth when we address an EIR, uh, that, a draft EIR that has come forward.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Councilmember Kusakian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it seems like someone's itching to build a tramway somewhere in Los Angeles because there's been talk of a tram to Dodger Stadium, and now there's this talk of a tram in Griffith Park. I can tell you that as far as it's concerning Griffith Park right here in our backyard, um, I can't imagine a model, um, that would make it something that I think would benefit the park or benefit the public. I just think it would scar the natural habitat that for, has been preserved in one shape or another over the years. Um, it is a very sensitive ecosystem right here in the heart of Los Angeles. Um, you know, we're one of the few major cities in the world that have large cats living within our boundaries. There is a mountain lion in Griffith Park. I believe there still is a mountain lion. I think one was tagged, and I know one was recently tagged not too long ago in the Santa Monica Mountains. Um, to do anything to dis- disrupt this, um, other than to just protect it and, and hope that, um, it remains a place of peaceful reflection, um, for people to visit, to hike, to enjoy. Uh, the wilderness right here in our backyard is, is a shame. I don't see the tram as being compatible with that use. Um, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Najarian, about process. However, I think that it's incumbent upon us, if we feel that this is not a good use, and I believe it will harm, um, Griffith Park, um, as it is now, for us to make our opinion known rather than to allow consultants and, you know, individuals who are going to pour over reports from spinning their wheels in vain. So I'd like to join our colleagues in Burbank, um, and our colleagues here on the city council by expressing our vociferous and, um, uh, I guess unquestionable opposition, uh, to this tram.
Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine? Connect, uh?
Thank you.
Ms. Devine, you.
Okay, there it goes.
Yeah.
Um, this does not preclude us from looking at the EIR and other studies that come out when, if, and when a project is chosen. Uh, but I think it's important, and I thank my colleagues, uh, that we do express ourselves now, uh, so that they know exactly where we stand now. Then when we look at the project and see what they choose, you know, will we change our minds? Maybe, maybe not, probably not. Uh, but, uh, I, I'm, uh, I, I'm happy to, uh, to move this, uh, letter of opposition.
Uh, one second.
If I could make a, uh, make a suggestion.
Ms. Councilmember Najarian?
If I could make a suggestion that perhaps bring me on board to this. I was going to otherwise abstain, but let me say that if our letter can be as specific as possible with the issues that we have problems with, as opposed to, "We don't like the tram idea." I mean, all the things that we talked about and the, and even Burbank's letter was not that detailed, it was kind of general. They talked, you know, just about very, very sort of vague, uh, concerns. If our letter is specific, I'll be happy to sign on to it, and we can maybe go through some of the topics that an EIR would hit, whether it's visual blight, vibrations, destruction of habitat, uh, noise, uh, transit, traffic, parking. If, if we're going to get specific like that, I think that my signing on to that letter would have more, uh, more relevance than just, "We don't like the, the project because just a few little things."
Absolutely.
Uh, I just want to say, I like the Rancho area. I mean, few years, it was three years ago, I guess, there was a project, condominium project or housing project for Antalya Unit, that at the time, I said, "I don't like the project because this is a quiet neighborhood, people, they have, they have horses I do not have." It's, uh, why to bother the neighborhood? And I was against the project. I like that area, I like the Rancho area, but when I'm reading this, we have to be more precise. What we are objecting, as I guess Councilmember Najarian mentioned, I mean, just writing a letter and say, "I'm against it," and it's not specifically clear, and the project is not clear. As a professional engineer, I want to see fact, figures, bases to object something. And I don't see anything, I did, I did not get the chance to read 142 pages of the report. Uh, I glanced through it, I read a few pages, but, uh, at this time, I didn't see, when you do not have SEQA review, when you don't, do not have environmental impact report, this project going to take some time. And to object to something that is not exactly clear, that what I'm objecting, I will join to object if that's the final thing we want to do. But, uh, as, you know, somebody, an engineer, I won't see fact, figures, numbers, but to have bases to object to it, I don't see it here. Based on what I read from our, uh, staff and based on the report which is here, the strategy, vocability, and other, this, this is a voluminous report, but I don't know what I'm objecting to. Uh, Mr. Kusakian?
Samir, I understand what you're saying, and I certainly respect the perspective you bring to our council as, I think, the only, you, the only engineer, um, on this body. And I understand the process that we all want to respect as well, but I, I, I want to take a step back and say that this is greater than just a Rancho neighborhood or anywhere else. Griffith Park is akin to Central Park, to Golden Gate Park. It is one of the most historic and important green spaces within one of the largest metropolitan areas in the country. We are fortunate enough as Glendellians, as Glendale residents, to be living next to it. I have been going to Griffith Park for as long as I've lived in Glendale, going back all the way to my elementary school days. And it has grown in different uses. We had the Autry Museum, uh, built in that area, houses a number of amenities for all residents of Los Angeles and beyond to appreciate, but the natural habitats must be protected. Now, yes, in the past, there have been certain uses, and maybe there will be unforeseen uses in the future. However, we've come a long way in terms of our ecological awareness and the impact that we make in our own environments, in our own local environments as well. We certainly don't bran- burn trash in incinerators anymore. We know now that what an integral part this is of the larger ecosystem, along with the Santa Monica Mountains and the other surrounding natural habitats. And I think it's incumbent upon us as neighbors to Griffith Park to be, we are part stewards of this. It's the reason why we've invested so much money and planning to restore the Los Angeles River to where it is today and where it's going in the future in terms of back bike paths and pedestrian paths and, um, talking about the importance of that, uh, to the local environment. So, I, I mean, I get that there's a report, but, um, and I hope this doesn't come off glib, but, you know, we don't have to read the entire report to know that's a bad idea, just like you don't have to eat the entire cake to know it tastes terrible. You know, you can just, you get the gist of it and say, "This is a bad idea all around." I cannot conceive a way in which putting a tram and bringing whatever number of people you're going to bring to make it financially, uh, viable, um, to this area, a good idea. And like I said, there's a concept to build, there was a concept to build a tram to Dodger Stadium. Let them put all their eggs in that basket if they want to build a tram. Let them put all their eggs in that basket. If they want to build a tram, let them build it to Dodger Stadium.
Ms. Devine, Ms. Devine.
Well, and, and I appreciate what Mr. Kasakian is saying, and he's absolutely right. But I also think that tonight, first of all, I, I did not ever expect that we would simply send a letter that says, "We're opposed to the project." It was always in the back of my mind that we would give definite and distinct reasons why we are opposed to it, and I think tonight, staff has heard a lot of those reasons. You know, severing access to the park, if you, you know, if you impact the Martinez Arena. That's huge for our, our, our community, preserving the wildlife habitat, honoring the historic mandate, impacts on the trails and the recreational enjoyment of the park. The air views will be destroyed, not, not to mention what the construction, I mean, there are like 12 or 14 towers that are planned. That's a lot of towers. So, I think we have a lot of, of fuel for this, this letter of opposition.
I just friendly reminder, is there any way we can wait few months and then oppose to this until few things we, I mean, I'm not in favor of this, I'm in favor of opposing it, but at least wait few months until, to be more clear that what we are opposing at. You know, that's all I was saying. As I said, I don't want to see any Rancho property to be changed to apartment building or condominium, or to disturb the peace which we have right on south of us or southwest of us. But I don't know. I will go ahead with whatever you suggest. My suggestion would be to wait few months to have a little bit more information about this, but, but whatever. Is there any other comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, so we, we, at this point, we don't have a form of letter. So, why don't we, it sounds like there's consensus, at least to, or, or majority, at least to request staff to draft a letter. Why don't we get a letter drafted? Why don't we do it the way Councilmember Najarian suggested, where we, we're not necessarily saying, or we're not simply saying, "We're opposed." We're saying, "We have concerns about these, you know, seven or eight things." And, you know, if they're not addressed, we're, we're opposed, something like that. I mean, I, you know, words, method, come back with a letter, and then hopefully, we can all sign on to it. I don't, I don't think there's any reason to wait.
Any, Ms. Devine, connect your, connect the.
I'd like to make the motion, then, that we ask staff to draft a letter of opposition to the tram with specifics as to why we are opposed.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
I guess, is there any other comments before I go to the roll call? Mr. Najarian, do you have any comments, or I go to the roll call? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Landzoff.
Do you want us to draft based on the comments here and send it? Or, as I thought Mr. Brotman was suggesting, we bring it back to the council?
I, I would, I would like to have it brought back to council, so we can all see it, and then make sure that we're all in favor of the letter and the opposition.
And also, don't rush.
No, I want them to rush.
I want them to rush, too.
And, and, and one more thing. I think it's important to, I, I support Councilmember Devine's suggestion for it to come back, because Councilmember Najarian said that he is inclined to support this based on, you know, the devil being in the details, what the letter says. And I think it's important for us to show unanimity, a unified front for this. So, if that helps us come together and, and speak it with one voice, it lends more credibility to any opposition we have to whatever is being specifically proposed.
How about if they draft a letter and send to us, and we will put our input and later to bring it to us? Is that possible, Mr. Garcia? To draft a letter based on whatever we said, and send us, and we review it, and then bring it to us, not bring the letter here and say, "Vote yes or no."
We would make it available as part of the agenda packet.
I'm sorry, Ms. Devine?
I'm sorry. I was just gonna, I just wanted to say that we have a motion and a second on the, the item. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
I would just, we, you know, the staff would draft the letter. We would bring it back as part of an agenda item, so you would have it in advance to review before the actual meeting.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Ms. Devine?
Yes, it's perfect.
All right. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you. I guess this was a great resolution or compromise, maybe. All right. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next would be 8B Glendale Water and Power regarding change orders to contract with Wood Group Pratt and Whitney Industrial Turbine Services LLC. B1 motion, motion authorizing change order number one to contract number C106875 with Wood Group Pratt and Whitney Industrial Turbine Services LLC for emergency off-site repair of two Pratt and Whitney gas generators used at Grayson Power Plant in the amount not to exceed 1,802,000. Two, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding, and authorizing change order number two to contract number C106875 with Wood Group Pratt Whitney Industrial Turbine Services LLC, increasing the contract amount by 200,000 and extending the term of the contract by one additional year for the purchase of additional spare replacement parts and services on as-needed basis for the maintenance and limited repair, if needed, of other Pratt and Whitney equipment and related system in operation at Grayson Power Plant.
Thank you. Mr. Golani?
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, Member of City Council. This item before you is a request for approval of an emergency contract change order for the repair of these engines. These have a long lead time, and as such, we are requesting an emergency contract change order approval, so that we'll have these units operational and, and providing electric generation, electric service prior to the summer peak period. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Young, our Assistant General Manager, to provide a, a report on this item.
Mr. Young.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council. My name is Mark Young. I'm the interim General Manager of EWT this month. I'd like to provide a little history of the use of the Pratt Whitney equipment.
Mr. Young, excuse me. Can you go closer to your microphone, please, because it echoes inside your room?
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so, the city has four aerodermivative gas turbines that make up 8A APC units with one spare. Over the last seven years or so, the power plant has been utilizing the parts off the spare in order to keep the units available during the design and approval of the repower. This was a planned strategy to minimize the cost of repairs in anticipation of the city starting a repowering effort. The failure of the C engine resulted in not having enough engines to operate both units. This had led us to this point. In order for the utility to be able to meet the expected city load, it is necessary to repair the turbines. The attentive staff is to place both of the repaired turbines into unit number 8BC to ensure that it's as reliable as possible. This unit is the largest unit that the city has in the city, is 68 megawatts, and we need this to cover the summer load during the summer heat wave. Tonight, we're respectfully requesting two change orders for the city to consider. Wood Group Pratt Whitney is the original OEM vendor for the turbines that make up both 8A and 8BC unit. The first change order is the 1.8 million that will cover the cost of the repair of the two turbines, and will be used to operate our existing APC at the plant. This covers all labor, material taxes, consumable shipping, and 5% contingency. The two engines are currently in the Wood Group facility in Connecticut, and work will be started immediately. Second resolution is to dispense with competitive bidding and authorizing a change order for $200,000 and extending the term of a contract for additional year for the purchasing of parts and services on an as-needed basis. This contract would be subject to the city's right of termination for convenience at any time. And given the age of 8A and 8BC gas turbines, spare parts are not really available to third-party, from third-party vendors. I'd open up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there any question from?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms., Councilmember Brot.
Yeah, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to confirm with you, Mark. I, I spoke to Steve Zern before he left about, with these repairs, what kind of life expectancy we would have on 8A and, and BC. Can you address that? Because I, I think if we do what we're talking about doing, we bring those units back, and we, we could still have a good run, run with them. I think he said five or to 10 years.
That's correct, and I guess the, the age or the duration of useful life will depend on how much you run those units. We don't plan on running them very often, so it could conceivably be even longer than that. The thing about this is that we're only fixing two engines. So, there's two other engines that would need to be addressed, but we're going to put them in in BC to make it the most reliable. So, it should last five, 10, or more years that would help us. It's, it's the ancillary gears that might be an issue, but this gas turbine would be in very good shape.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it makes sense to me. I, I know we need it, so I'm, I'm supportive.
Is there any other question from Mr. Young? Okay, I, I have a question, actually. First, this is 8BC, right? There is no A.
There is an 8A, but that's not, that's not the one that's broken. 8BC is two gas turbines attached to one common generator.
Okay, so it's 8BC?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's assume we come to the point that few years later, we don't need it, can be sell it, still will be something that it can be sold.
Salvation value would be much higher as a, as a repaired unit than it would be if it wasn't working.
Okay. And as far as environmentally, is this gonna be, will work better than before, right? Will not cause any problems as far as the environment is concerned?
It, it will make the unit more reliable.
How about more efficient?
It could make it more efficient, yes. A better-running unit, a rebuilt engine would definitely give us a better opportunity to get more output out of it. But really, the environmental component is based on the SCRs and other things that are associated with it that we're not touching at this moment.
Okay. So, if there is no other question, may I have a motion for this item?
I'll move the item.
Done, Ken?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, what's next, please?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do not have any callers at this time.
What happened? Why you wouldn't have?
Mr. Mayor, I have an item of new business, so maybe we can, any callers can call in right now while I'm reading the item.
So, callers, they can call while we are still busy. Okay, Mr. Garcia?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I ask for a motion that pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1 and Article 8, Section 1 of the City Charter, the Council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Shakira Johnson as Assistant City Attorney for the City of Glendale, and further, that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the City Clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale as and for the written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a sec? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, congratulations to our new employee. Okay, what's next?
Mayor, I do have two new callers now.
Okay, let's go to our.
For oral communications.
Let's go to our callers.
Erica Passman, you're live. Erica, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Erica Passman, and I'm calling in to speak, to speak about the Hillside Development Review Policy, which is codified in the Glendale Municipal Code 30.11.04. Basically, I'm sure you're aware that it states that developments in the hillside should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of size, scale, bulk, mass, and architectural style, among other things. I have just been through two Design Review Board hearings on hillside projects directly above and below my house, which numerous neighbors have opposed. And what I have observed was that this hillside design review policy seems to not have very much, or very little application in projects prior to the submission to the Design Review Board. And, for example, in each project, the hillside code was not addressed by the applicant, nor was there a separate analysis by the city regarding this hillside policy and the surrounding neighborhood. One project below me was to create a, was proposed to create a two-story house that was like 49, 4,900 square feet in a neighborhood of one-story homes that averaged 2,300 square feet. And this is creating a house that's double in size and 115% larger than the surrounding homes, which would be in direct contradiction with this hillside development policy. But it seems to me the applicants do not have any knowledge of this hillside code, because why would they submit something that is clearly out of scale of the neighborhood? And when I looked into it further, I saw that the Planning Department does not have a separate checklist for houses or projects that are going to take place in the hillside or require a specific analysis before submission to the Design Review Board. And then, I feel like I go to the Design Review Board, and they're stuck, you know, trying to figure this all out. And what I saw in the Design Review Board meetings was that they seem to be not fully informed about this hillside policy. You know, one member saying, "Well, the size can be addressed by mass and scale," even though there's a code, the code says specifically that the size is supposed to be compatible to surrounding neighborhoods, and in my case, it'd be like a house like 2,300 square feet. Then, another Design Review Board member was confused just the fact that there is this compatibility requirement that don't match up with maybe some other codes regarding square footage and a lot. So, so there is this confusion, and that's why I'm bringing it up. And I think that there are common sense things that can be done to maybe improve awareness of this hillside design review policy and protect our neighborhoods and strengthen it. And what I see is that there should be some clarification on this hillside policy of what is allowed, for example, like even in the square footage, if somebody's going to build something that's 115%, that's clearly, you know, double the size, like what, how, what can they build? Like, what's the percentage? Or there's got to be some determination, what is the limit that they can actually build? And that I think that before applicants submit a project, they should be required to read and apply these guidelines and the hillside codes before they even submit it to the Design Review Board. And that there should be a separate checklist in the Planning Department and an analysis of whether a project even submit, even meets the surrounding neighborhood to give the applicant and, you know, this, maybe the Design Review Board, like, an understanding of what would be allowed and whether or not the Design Review Board would even, you know, entertain that idea. It just seems like a lot of people are wasting time and money to get an architect to design something, then it gets in front of a Design Review Board, and they're like, "No, this hillside..." something, then it gets in front of a Design Review Board and they're like, no, this hillside policy, you know, probably applies to this project. You'd have to go back to set it to be redesigned. I think maybe that portion of it could be avoided. And I also think that, that there should be guidance given to either the Design Review Board members and city staff on what this hillside policy entails and what should be done if a project doesn't meet these guidelines. So, and I know the city has spent a lot of money coming up with these guidelines and codes with intent in preserving our neighborhoods. And I'm actually seeing firsthand with two projects, one directly above me and one below me, that could potentially change the look and feel of my neighborhood. And I know it's really concerning to me and my neighbors that live in the hillside. And on a side note, you know, I ran for city council in 1999, and one of the main issues was hillside development at that time. That's like 20 years ago. So I'm just, you know, kind of surprised that after all this time, hillside development is being allowed with projects that seem to be not compatible with the surrounding homes and that it's still an issue. So like I said, I think there's some common sense approaches that can make, you know, this hillside development policy bring more awareness to it before projects are submitted and strengthen it and to protect our neighborhoods. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Danny, and thank you, Erica Passman. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, I do have one more caller.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Herbert Milano, you're live. Go ahead, Herbert.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. I am calling to address two issues having to do with city finances. And my observations as to how individuals, including elected officials, oftentimes hold opinions that very frequently are not really challenged and you hold them to be true. It's what I have noticed significantly, especially in the last couple of months on the national level. When people in Congress and individuals who are very adamant about their issues believe something to be true, but oftentimes it isn't true, and the information that they have been exposed to is usually the significant way in which people have formed opinions. Two of those things that pertain to Glendale have to do with property taxes, meaning Proposition 13, and the second one is the issues having to do with the pension obligations and the overall city debt. So let me tackle the first one. Oftentimes, very frequently, on an annual basis during the budget study session, a presentation is often made by the city staff telling you that because Glendale's property rate was lower than surrounding cities back in 1978, that somehow we got stuck with a lower rate and it therefore is impacting the potential for Glendale to bring in additional property tax rates. And they use that information, which is true, as a way of persuading you to support actions against Proposition 13. But if you look at the data and I requested a California Public Record Act information to look back from 1978, and you'll find that the increases in revenues from property taxes have not been constrained at all during all of these years. In fact, in some years in the 1980s, we've got year-over-year increases of up to 16% increase. Why? No, because we built significantly. We built high rises, commercial areas, shopping malls. We've done a significant amount of turnover where a small house in a large lot was maybe, maybe bringing in $2,000 to $3,000 a year in property tax revenues, but then it's, when it's converted to multifamily housing, it then brings in, you know, $20,000 in annual property tax. And when you do that significantly during, you know, nearly 40 years now, well, we find that the property taxes have increased significantly more than the rate of inflation. So what happens when something's presented to you like this and your predisposition is what you've heard during the Democratic Club meetings, you know, or, or an area surrounded by advocates who want to push Proposition 13 and limit it? Now, I, I'm a Democrat, but I've also am a fiscal conservative individual who sees from the Republican side that we need to really look at the data carefully before we form an opinion. And so I am in the process of building this chart that shows you the growth of property tax revenue in the city of Glendale, you know, for the past decades since 1978. But you can look at a, at a statistical section in the back of the CAFER, and you'll see at least for the past 10 years, the significant growth in the property tax revenues. So property taxes have never, ever constrained the city of Glendale from obtaining sufficient revenues to run its operations or its desired objectives. It never has been, it's not true at all. So I will be presenting before the city council, and I wanted to give you a heads up on it.
Thank you.
The second thing that I wanted to bring up are the issue with the pensions in the last 20 years. The CAFER is available from 20 years ago, it's available on the web, and you will be able to see in the notes to the financial statement that the pension, unfunded pension obligation 20 years ago was zero, actually was positive. We had a surplus of money available for pensions. And today is up to $600 million in unfunded obligation. That's $600 million in the last 20 years that the city has become now accountable, unfunded, without the resources to pay for it. And I think that those two are related. On the one hand, property taxes have never constrained the city from obtaining sufficient revenues, and on the other hand, we have the pension having a significant constraint in the city's ability to be able to maintain its operations properly. When you add the rest of the long-term obligation, you are over $1 billion, I repeat, $1 billion in long-term obligation. So it is my hope that when I do present this data, that you'll be receptive to the idea that this is taken from data directly from the city's financial statement. It is to get you acclimated to the fact that you need to address the pension obligation and fix it. Unfortunately, as I have seen in Congress, people are oftentimes more interested in getting reelected and so on, and there's always an election in the horizon, and so things are never tackled. And oftentimes, it does mean that you lose an election because you did the right thing. And it is my hope that members of the city council finally take on this issue that has been postponed for so long and it is impacting us significantly with additional taxes and with additional fees and inability to be able to maintain the infrastructure. So those are my arguments that I want to be able to, in the next couple of months, regularly bring to your attention how the pension obligations has impacted the city of Glendale's ability to maintain its infrastructure and how it has forced you to increase fees and taxes to the, to the residents of Glendale.
Thank you.
I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Is there any other caller?
Mayor, no more callers.
Thank you. All right.
Move to adjourn.
Wow, you are fast, man. Do I have a second? Mr. Kasak, okay, Ms. Devine Kasakian, both, they said it. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 7:39 and few seconds. Until next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.